Four. Six, I see six council. Seven, okay, we're good.
I have four. Of mine, let me text the fifth.
Casey is promoting the panelists right now?
Look at that.
You ready to go Melissa? Let's go ahead, this is, let's go ahead and call the Thursday, December 2nd, Joint Tom Water City Council and Tom Water School Board meeting to order. I'm Mayor Pete from that and why we just take a moment and have council, our council introduce themselves, so I'll call out a name and then you introduce yourself and then call on the next person. I'll start with the person who's in my upper left in my Zoom matrix, Councilmember Schneider.
Hi, I'm Charlie Schneider, I'm council member for the city of Tomwater, position number seven. And who I see next would be Angela.
Hi, I'm Angela Jefferson, position number two, city of Tomwater, also retired military. And I'm happy to be here. Next is IC Leeta.
Thank you Angela, hi everyone, Leeta Dahlhop, as you can see from our wonderful backgrounds, city of Tomwater, position number one. And that means we still represent the whole entire city. And I see Joan Cathy.
Hi, I'm Joan Cathy, council member city of Tomwater, I've been here a few years and I've I feel like when I look at my, the councils I've been on, I really feel grateful to have been able to serve with the people and to serve the city of Tomwater, gives me a good feeling and I'm glad I'm here tonight. Oh, I'm supposed to say somebody I see, I see Eileen.
Thank you Joan, I'm Eileen Swarthout, council member of the city of Tomwater. Doing this for like seven years, been a resident of Tomwater for thirty, over yeah, thirty years, over thirty years. And my kiddos all went through Tomwater schools, so go Black Hills Wolves. Anyway, so I see Michael Althouser.
Hi, Michael Althouser, Tomwater City Council Member, position five. I did not have the privilege of going to Tomwater schools. I went through North Thurston School District, but when we played Black Hills in soccer, I did get a hat trick. So I apologize for breaking a lot of hearts on the soccer field back in the day. Very happy to be here.
Oh.
I think that's all from, from, from the city.
Did we get Debbie?
Debbie.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Debbie Sullivan and Tomwater City Council, position six. And I've been on the council for eight years. And I am also mayor-elect, so I will take office on January 1.
Thank you, everyone, I'll turn it over to you Melissa.
All right, I like how you guys did that, so maybe we can try and do that, there's only five of us. I'm Melissa Beard, I'm the school board president for like only one more week, I'm not counting the days at all. And I went through Tomwater schools, proud to be a T-bird and a parent of a wolf. And I'm really, really proud to serve on the school board with my fellow board members. So next I see Scott.
Scott Kilo, I represent District Three, I have been in public education for twenty-eight years. That's right, I started when I was twenty-three. Oh, I taught at Tomwater High School for seventeen and a half years. Okay, I spy with my little eye, Lori Sale.
Thank you Scott, hello everybody, good evening. As Scott just said, my name is Lori Sale and I was appointed to the Tomwater School Board on May thirteenth of this year and just recently won election to my position, I represent District One. And I am grateful and feel very privileged and honored to be a part of such an amazing group of people. And I will, oh, one more thing, I'm a parent of three children. And one recently graduated from Black Hills this past June. And I have a son who also attends Black Hills and a daughter who attends Tomwater Middle School. So as they say, we are all in. I would happily pass this off to IC Darby.
Hello everyone, I'm Darby Keikinen, School Board Director for District Five. I also have two children in the Tomwater School District, one in seventh grade and one in tenth grade. We'll pass over to Casey.
Thank you Darby very much, I'm Casey Taylor and I'm the Vice President. I also have a kid in the school district as well, at Peter G, a first grader. And then recently just had a daughter graduate from Tomwater as well and she attends SPU, Oklahoma Falcons. Thank you.
All right, that's all of us. And then we also have our Superintendent Sean Dotson, who has turned his screen off. But he's here.
And John Donner, City Administrator is here as well. Hi Sean, hi John. And Ann Cook, our Communications Manager is here as well. And I will turn it over to Eileen and Matthew to lead us through this evening.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you all again, thanks for being back here for another round of engagement with some pretty, pretty meaty topics. So thank you for having us and thank you for taking on this challenge together as a leadership group. I think it just speaks volumes about your leadership and your commitment to this community that you've been willing to engage in this process together. Um, okay, let's see, Matthew, do you want, you want to say hi?
Hi, good to be with you all again, good to see your faces.
All right, should I share my screen?
Go for it.
We'll see how I do with this. It's not been good lately, I don't know what's going on with me. Are you seeing the PowerPoint? Okay.
Yes, yeah, we're good.
Great, okay, all right, it's going well so far. Okay, so we're back. And these are just a reminder, just a refresher of what we've talked about many times in the past. So I'm just not going to spend a ton of time on them. But I am going to ask you to think about which ones of these you've been using as you've read through and experienced some of the twenty-one day challenge. And which ones of these do you think you're going to really try to push yourself to lean into this evening as we have our conversation together? Okay, so number one, to stay engaged, don't let your heart and mind check out. And usually that's not a problem with this group at all, that there's lots of engagement. And just to, just to reiterate that engagement is both how we are and in the moment, in the conversation. And engagement is also what happens after this, right? So when the twenty-one day challenge is over and it's back to sort of business as usual, how do you continue to be engaged for the long term in doing this work when it's not right here in front of you? And you're not setting aside like these specific times to have these conversations? How will you bring it back in to the work that you do on a regular basis? Um, experience discomfort, I am sure that you must have had some moments of discomfort in our time together and as well as in your own experience of reading through the twenty-one day challenge. So just to remind ourselves that discomfort is part of the process. And it's all signs that we are changing and growing and expanding our knowledge and our understanding and our experiences. And I'll just share with you a quick story, real brief, I'll try to be brief. Um, but I had, I've had two recent experiences with having a, like a critical conversation with, with colleagues of mine. That I was not actually really looking forward to, but I knew it was better for all of us to actually say something rather than talk about them instead of to them. And so I, I made it a goal for myself to actually have these conversations. And I had both the conversations and I think they both went well, in one case, I felt the liberation of saying things that had been on my heart for a long time and that I just needed to be said and sort of freeing myself from the need for a response. But just to say, I just need the space to say that to you. And you can do with it what you want, but I have no attachment to how you're going to react to it. And in the other conversation that I had, it was with someone I didn't know all that well. But my experience with this person in a meeting that we were both in was not, not great. And I wanted to share that experience with this person in the hopes that it wouldn't just sit with me and stay with me, but in the hopes that we could actually move forward differently. Because I was like, if it continues like this, I am not going to want to be in meetings with this person. And I'm not going to have a high degree of trust for this person. And I would rather talk to them about it, so not a comfortable situation, right? I don't love doing things like that. And I did it and we actually talked it all the way through. And I just shared with this person all of those things. I said, listen, this is hard. This is an intent impact conversation. I have, I am positive your intention in, in this meeting was not what the impact was on me. And I just wanted us to have the opportunity to talk about it. And they were great and we had an actually like really positive conversation and processed it all the way through and I think ended up stronger and better on the other side. So I think it's important to share stories like that because I think we have so much dread about doing that. And to share those stories when we can about like, when we do those things, it does actually improve our relationships. There is an opportunity to improve our relationships and the way that we do work together in an anti-racist way. And that was my experience with that conversation. Okay, so that was experience discomfort. Speaking your truth, I think my story is also illustrated speaking my truth. Again, not always the most comfortable thing. And so liberating when we do it, right? To accept and expect non-closure, you know, we've practiced that plenty of times over the course of this challenge together. They, there are, as Matthew and I have said many times, there are many meaty topics in this challenge and there's no way that we could do sort of like the in-depth, deep dive, do justice to, to the real complexities of all these topics. So I am sure that you must be experiencing non-closure. And so I think just for us all to reframe this twenty-one day challenge as that opening opportunity and invitation to do more learning on our own and learning together. And then intent and impact, so a lot of times our conflict rises from those instances where our intentions don't match our impact. And I think it's just so much, you know, just again, my story of my experience of this person was that they, they wanted to be accountable, accountable to impact. And they did not go to the defense of their intention. And because of that, I think our conversation went really well. And I think we both ended up with increased trust for one another. So again, just wanted to share how if, when we use these practices, they can actually help us. And that we do have to practice them and that we do have to practice using them. So Matthew, do you want to add anything to any of that?
I think you got it.
All right, so I just invite all of you to think about which ones of these have been coming up for you recently? Which ones of these did you experience as you were going through the twenty-one day challenge? And which ones of these would you like to lean into tonight as we have our conversation together? And actually, I'll just pause here and see if anyone has any reflections on that. Anyone want to reflect on or comment on which ones of these have sort of been popping up for you recently? Yes, Debbie.
So I think in a way, couple of them have been and especially you know, when you start getting into the nuances, especially the white supremacy portion of that. It is so deep and so it's almost like pulling back layers of an onion on a lot of this stuff. And so that one was very deep for me and I really want, I I marked that information so that I could go back because I think that's something that I'm experiencing and seeing around me so much and especially right now in our society, it just seemed to just burst open. And I think it, it's good to revisit that section a couple of times because I got some really good information from that. And your list of agreements and practices, is that something that you could share that we could like? I would like to put that, I get my desk, so that
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, because that fits in a lot of other areas of our life too. And I would, I think that would just be one of those little nice things to have posted on the wall and, and just kind of one of those reminders.
Yeah, absolutely, we're absolutely happy to share with you and just, we should always say this and some, I often forget to. Those are not agreements that we created, they come from the work of Glenn Singleton and it's called, from a book called Courageous Conversations About Race. And we did add the one about intent and impact, but the rest of those are all from Glenn Singleton's work. Courageous Conversations. And the other thing I'll say about that is that they work best when you do them collectively, right? So when you work together, if we're all agreeing to use those and we're all agreeing to practice those together, that's when they actually do work the best, right? So imagine if I'd gone into that conversation with my coworker and said, can we have an intent impact conversation? And that person had been like, I have no idea what you're talking about and no, right? But because we had had that, we have this, this practice in my agency around intent and impact, we were able to lean on those and to really be intentional about trying to lean into that dynamic. So that's just another kind of tip for, for using this. But yes, happy to share all of those things with you all. Any other reflections or thoughts about the agreements? Yes, Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, um, mine was experiencing discomfort and speaking the truth. When I was reading about the white culture norms dominating the workplace and professionalism standards, it brought back memories for me of my military days where I had to wear my hair straight. Because that was professionalism in the military, straight hair. So it was such a challenge for me just to have and maintain straight hair. Because you know, with, with black hair, it's curly. So it takes a lot of heat and straightening calls. So I lived far from post, so I had to drag this huge duffel bag into work, my uniform, my boots, blow dryer, curling iron, and you know, we have to use oil. So I had to have my oils, basically I had to set up a beauty salon in the gym just to maintain this professional straight hair after doing PT in the mornings. So it just brought back memories for me and I'm just so glad that things are changing. Because when I go on base now, I see women with braids in their hair. I see women with natural curly Afro hair. And it's, it's just good to see that those professional standards are changing. So yeah, that, that's, that was a little triggering or painful part to read, so yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for sharing that story. And I just think about like, the pairing of professionalism with straight hair, AKA whiteness, right? And the, the meaning of that, if you think about the profound way that we've aligned what it means to be professional with, with an aspect of your body, right? That, that you were born with and to say that the way you came into this world is not, is not professional, is not good enough and what that means to people. So yes, we can, we can be thankful when if the military has, has changed its standards around that. And I think too, that gives us an opportunity to reflect on the ways in which, what, what are other ways in which we've aligned professionalism around whiteness, right? That's a conversation we're going to be digging into tonight, actually. So we'll be spending a lot more time with that topic tonight. That's something I hear when I work with educators of color, that's often one of their most painful experiences is being told you're not professional because of something related to their appearance, the way they talk, like a cultural norm that they might have, their hair, any of those things is to say like, the way you are in this world is, is not considered good enough for you to be working with our kids, right? And we absolutely know that that is not the case and our kids need people who can come to work as their authentic selves, right? And not trying to ascribe to and fit into some box that is not meant for them. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, other thoughts, any other thoughts or reflections on the agreements? Yes, Michael.
The, the piece that was sort of sticking out to me is, is expecting and accepting non-closure. Because as, you know, people who comprise a legislative branch of government or in Pete's or Debbie's case, I suppose, an executive branch. You know, like, like it's, we are sort of ingrained to see issues and to try to solve them as quickly as possible and to try to come up with a solution that benefits the most people as quickly and as efficiently as possible, like there's a whole variety of matrices that we could apply to that. But my, my point is that it, it's very difficult to look at a deep, deeply rooted historical challenge and to not just say, all right, all right, all right, let's just, let's go fix it right now. Because there's so much more interpersonal work, like first, speaking personally, there's so much more interpersonal work and coming to terms with my own white privilege and understanding my role in that solution so that I'm not stepping over things so that I'm being an accomplice rather than trying to control a conversation or take up space or select, one of those fallacies in there was thinking that you know the perfect solution to things. And that's a challenge too, because we've tried to tell through being elected officials, we've had robust conversations with the community about how we, we think we have the ability to make the right decisions. So I think like personally for me, that, that's triggering a lot of important interpersonal, kind of like take a step back and look at things to make sure that I'm not acting or thinking too quickly or jumping to conclusions or entering conversations with preconceived notions or prejudice. To make sure that I'm having fully thought out analyses of things and listening to the right people and not having any conclusions drawn in advance and also accepting that you know, that the solution is, that there is no solution in a box that you can just grab and cling on to and say, okay, we did it, that it's a lifelong journey of being an accomplice. So that, that's sort of what I think the readings for, for ten to thirteen sort of impressed upon me is that sort of notion.
Thank you, so appreciate that. And then Charlie.
Thank you, so I want to kind of play off what Angela said and I didn't realize this until she spoke about her hairdo. So when I first started working at the post office, I, I was a hundred and forty-five pounds and I had a natural Afro, believe it or not. I know you look at my hair now and you think it's pretty straight. But I did have a natural Afro and I, I, they used to call me Q-tip because that's pretty much what I looked like. And so I wanted to be one of the youngest supervisors that the post office ever promoted. And my supervisor was a person of color. And he mentioned to me, Charlie, if you want to move up the professionalism and succeed as a supervisor, you need to change your hairstyle. So here was, here was a person of color telling me that I need to change my Afro into something that was more professional presentable. So it just brought up a flashback, so thank you for mentioning your aspect on that Angela, I appreciate that.
That's a great illustration of how all of us are impacted by white supremacy, right? And if the way that you've learned to succeed and survive in this world, whether you're a person of color or a white person, is by assimilating or by learning the rules of whiteness. And if you can, if you can bring yourself up to those standards and you can do it, you do it, right? That's how, that's how we've managed to survive in this world and that's, that's how we keep replicating these systems too. And taking a pause to examine what that does to a person. I mean, the other part of Angela's story that stood out to me was like, all the time and effort and labor and money that she had to put into doing that, that her white counterparts did not have to, did not have to, right? Like that sounds like, like a huge investment of additional time and labor on her part so that she could have the same job that somebody else had as well. So just thinking about the impacts of, of what we have, why we do the things that we do and, and the cost of doing them as well. Okay. Let's see, I think we're going to continue with the reflection modes, I'm going to toss it over to Matthew. I'll put the slide back up.
All right, so we're going to continue on this reflection piece. And I really, Michael, you spoke to one of these already in terms of what came up about the content from these last few days of the challenge. But just wanted you to pick one of these that, that, that feels the most significant. You know, what's still coming up from, from, from the last session? I think, I think Debbie talked about that a little bit. How is this challenge showing up in your mind and your heart and yourself and your body? And then what were some things that came up about these last few days in the challenge for you? Was there something that felt really, you know, significant, pokey? One of those, oh no, kind of moments? So wanted to give you these few questions and would love to just hear from everybody. You know, which, which one of these feels the, the, the most weighty for you, holds the most weight? And if you've already answered, you know, you don't, you don't have to do it again, but because we've had a few folks answer these questions already. Wanted to give time, print space for everybody to put their voice in the room.
Matthew, do you mean which one of these three questions are weighing most heavily with us? Is that, was that the question you're asking?
Yeah. Like I want you to pick the question that maybe feels the most uncomfortable if we're leading into our, our practices, you know, not, not, not pick the one that's like the easiest to answer, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Like what's, what's come up for you that really feels like, ooh, this is, this is hard? If you're able to lean into that.
This is Pete, I'll, I'll just say, I, I think this whole concept of white privilege I'm frankly struggling with. I didn't like it, I, I read the article on the guy who talked about poverty, him living in poverty and, and how I really identified with that guy, because you know, I, I won't say that I lived in poverty, but we were not a wealthy family. And I certainly didn't feel privileged in that sense. And so I, I, you know, reading that and then trying to understand, he, he talked about a number of other analogies that are not necessarily race-based that are, that are examples of, of privilege that I, I thought, I, I found that very, very insightful and, and helpful for me to kind of understand. very insightful and, and helpful for me to kind of understand that issue. So, anyway, that's something I, I'm, I'm struggling with and, and, uh, that, you know, the, the other, the other thing, and it's more perspective than looking back and that is, I, I know, uh, uh, like there's a regional planning council, they're starting to ask the question, well, how does this policy affect people of color or how is it, uh, in some way biased? And, um, I'm having a lot of difficulty thinking in terms of, it's like the, the structural racism lesson in here and target. I thought there was some really interesting examples on, uh, the medical system and, and how that has become racially biased and, uh, I, I think our, I, I'm, I'm, it's not like we have area, areas of Tom Water that are, you know, a particular race, separate race or whatever. I think people are integrated pretty much in our community. So I'm having a little, I'm having a little difficulty trying to figure out how how do we do things that, that, uh, hurt people of color, frankly? How, how do we, what are we doing, uh, that we don't know we're doing that? So, um, interested in that anyway, trying to learn more about that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much for, for saying those things. I think one of the things for me, the, one of the easiest ways for me to think about the white privilege conversation, especially when it's, you know, you, like you said, like somebody experiencing poverty, there's a lot of, a lot of times when, you know, folks get defensive around that is because it, it, the, the, it's the either or thinking, right? It's like, it's like even, like you're saying that I didn't have a hard time, right? Like you, like you're saying that like I didn't experience hardship and I like, that's not what it's saying, right? It's, it's both and, it's like I, I experienced hardship and I didn't have to navigate that as a person of color, right? So there's, there, it's, it's being able to kind of see those layers and how they play together. Uh, so it's not, it's like not taking anything away. It's just saying that you didn't have to, you didn't have to experience that, um, with, with those other layers on top.
Yeah, I, I relate more, more closely to, to women in the professional world in the sense that I know that they've had frankly, difficult breaking into a man's world in the professional environment. I, I've seen it with my wife, you know, and she's a professional engineer, I'm a professional engineer, but uh, she was not promoted, uh, you know, as much as I was. And I'm convinced it's because of, of her gender more than her, her performance. And, uh, you know, I think that those sorts of things, um, anyway, I, I've seen that, yeah, play. So, so I sort of get it, but obviously I haven't, you know.
Yeah, yeah. The intersectionality is, is all the layers all together. It's all, it's all woven together. Yeah, thank you. Um, Eileen, I see your hand up next.
Well, I, I can identify with the second question and then, um, and then I was looking back at, um, what does internalized superiority look like, that topic? And so, um, my daughter and I went for a walk today and I was sharing a conversation about, um, a person that I feel like I, I should talk to. And then I, and I had this, um, I had to like call myself short because I was having this, you know, expectation that they should act, you know, in a certain way and, and that, you know, um, and I realized that I, I need to think in a different way, you know, I wasn't, because I'm thinking that they're, they need to meet my standards rather than, you know, looking at them as a whole person. And so I suddenly just, I said to my daughter, it's like, huh, I need to, uh, to, to see this in a different way and I appreciate what we have been, you know, because it's like you don't know when you're doing this, you know, and you don't, and so to finally be like, to be aware that this is helping, I mean, be more aware of how, um, you know, I need to take more things into account. And I appreciate what Pete said too, is that, um, in our jobs, that how do we, you know, because we, just because we don't see it doesn't mean it's not there. You know, how do we bring, you know, how do we look at our, our laws and different things that we're creating? You know, because we don't see it, you know, but it's there. And so we need help with that and, uh, you know, how to direct us in that way that we're, we're being fair and equitable. So, thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Eileen. Derby.
So my reflection is kind of along the lines of what are the, it might be all of them. Carrying this for quite some time and then sort of what I was struggling with and thinking about the most, you know, recently. I think the place where I continue to struggle and I'm talking years now at this point because I've been, I've been involved in work that, um, has been focused on diversity, equity and inclusion for quite some time. Anti-racism is relatively new in that, um, in that whole experience. And I think that's the piece that I, I continue to struggle with is very similar, um, to what Pete had shared in terms of, I hear a lot that, you know, leading with racial equity and if we lead with racial equity and we always put that at the forefront, then that is going to benefit everyone, you know, we, if we come from that space. But the challenge for me is I am not a person of color. And so I, while I read all of our readings and everything that in here about institutional racism, structural, all of it, it makes complete and total sense to me and I completely understand where all that's coming from. But what I'm struggling with was, is how does that, how does that actually translate to a difference in a policy? Um, and I had an opportunity to really, um, recognize where I can, where my perspective comes from and where I continue to have that gap when it comes to anti-racist thinking during the election season. So many of you are aware that one of the hot topics that was coming towards school board candidates is around critical race theory. Um, got a couple of emails from potential voters that were asking, what is your philosophy on critical race theory? Um, and my response was, well, I can't speak to critical race theory. I'm not a legal scholar. Um, it's not that simple. It's a very complicated topic. So, um, not necessarily going to speak to that, but what I will speak to is what I think of when I think of educational equity. Um, and what I find myself reflecting on, um, always comes back to the concept of, of resources. And, you know, people who have attended schools and places where they didn't have resources, whether it be the school itself or whether it be their family, didn't have the, you know, the impact and the influence. And those are the kinds of things that I think about in terms of, um, I can see where policy can be framed in a way, you know, that is meant to benefit the, the wealthy and the dominant culture, basically. Um, and so that, that is something that I will continue to really need to, 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 to need some help with in terms of, I can see where we can, you know, make changes to policy that will benefit people of color and that we keep that anti-racist lens in mind. But as far as something very specific that can be done to change a policy that will directly make things better for people of color, I'm, I'm, I'm still struggling with that.
Great. Thank you, Derby. Yeah, I think the resource question is huge. I, the one thing that immediately came up for me when you were talking about that is to think about resources, um, through different frames, that it's not just, it's not just money. You know, time, like emotional resource, social resources, like that familial resource, like thinking about those, those ways of being and connectivity that are in our world and that are really important for us as humans, that humanize the space, that humanize education, that like, that the relational, um, relational resources. Um, so there's a lot of different ways to think about how that shows up in our system and our policy and how we implement that. Like so much of our policy work at the SD is, is centering relationships. And so many times in these, in these spaces, we will do work that, that does that. And then people will say, well, when are we really going to get to work? It's like, we have been working, like building relationships with people, like what we're doing in this space and, and, and talking, you know, from our hearts and like what's going on with us as humans. Like that, that humanizes the work and that is, to me, to me, that's anti-racist because racism, uh, it dehumanizes, you, you, you dehumanize other people and, and, and it dehumanizes ourselves. Um, so that disconnection, that disease of disconnection is huge. And so the, the more we can connect, the more we can think about resources from, from different ways, um, other than monetary is very important. I'm not, it's, it's not the either or, it's the and, 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 right? But I, but I hear you. Thank you. And thank you for, for speaking that into the space. Yes, Melissa.
So since the last meeting, I was reflecting on something Michael had said when he was talking about the sidewalks. Like I don't know how many times I've retold that story when people ask, you know, what is this work? And it's, it's just, it was mind blowing to think about that. And I was trying to figure out what does that look like in the school district? Um, again, that's mind blowing, um, to me, like, because I am one of those who, uh, this is the guilt part where I, I learned, I learned how the system worked and I'm working it. People, I'm totally working it. So I'm a part of it and I know I'm, I'm, I know that I keep promoting it because I know how it works. And so, um, trying to fight that part of me that says, okay, this is how I can help people of color. You know, I can help them learn the system, but the system sucks, you know? The system sucks. The fact that I don't know, I don't know things about my history and that it wasn't valued, that's bad. I don't want kids to grow up thinking that, that you have to learn other people's history and not your own. Or teachers thinking that if, if someone isn't complaining about something, that they must be okay. You know, and, and, and promoting the idea that if you assimilate, you're going to be, you're going to do okay. Um, I don't want our kids going through a system like that. And I don't know, my struggle is I don't know how to, how to fix that. Um, because I, I did this my own way. I, I navigated this Tom Water system in a way that has really benefited me, but I don't want other kids to have to do that. And I don't know how to kind of, and going back to what Michael said, like his upending how we think about things. And I don't know how to do that. So that's, my struggle has been to stay engaged because then I just give up. So.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Who's next?
I'll go next.
Thank you, Lori.
Um, so yeah, I, um, I, I think what's staying with me from last session is just, it's just a gratitude and it's just, it's, it's thankful that, uh, folks are willing to have the discussion. I think that many people, uh, feel better after they have these discussions. They're able to kind of release those emotions and feelings that have been building up over the years and finally maybe have an outlet now to put those feelings out into the world and feel that they're doing something productive, um, being ally. In some way, I, I think that's kind of my reflection tonight is just gratitude for the willingness for folks to want to actually say their, their piece and, and, uh, find a safe space to do it in. Um, I did want to kind of circle back to Mayor Pete's point about the discussion on white privilege. And that's a, that's a sticky wicket and I, and it's, and it's funny and I'll, I'll share my, uh, story real quickly. You know, growing up, where I did in Ohio, I'm an only child, came from affluent means. I didn't want for anything. So some would say I was privileged. I was the only girl of color, even though I don't really care for that term. I think we all have color. I don't see white folks who are transparent. Everybody has color. And I think sometimes the language there is not so great, but it's another discussion. So some would say I did have privilege in that way. I didn't grow up poor, not by any stretch of the imagination. But I did go to a school where I was the only girl of color, person of color from the day I started third grade to the day I graduated from my high school. So I dealt with challenges and things that, uh, most kids probably never would have to deal with. And the fact that I didn't want for anything also made me a target because there was resentment that this girl had more than I did. And she was privileged in that way. But even living in that privileged existence financially, I still dealt with racial animosity. Um, and I think the best way to describe white privilege is you're not having to deal with any, you don't have to worry about your race affecting your life in ways that you take for granted. You can run around the block and not worry you're going to get shot down. You can go shopping and not be followed around the mall. You can walk in a restaurant and get a table and not be served attitude at the same time. Those are the types of little microaggressions versus macroaggressions that, um, you deal with when you are a person of brown hue, darker skin. My husband's a white man, as many of you know, um, there's a definite difference sometimes when we go into a situation together. Um, I think, I think the easiest way to say it is that, the white male existence in our country is the most freeing lived experience you can have. And I think in that way, they're very lucky. But I also think in another way, that gives them a position to be teachers and, and helpful as well. And I have always just felt throughout my whole life, no matter what I've had to go through, no matter what I've had to deal with, that you always will find helpful people. And even though I went through the school I did and there were times where it was tough, I had many white teachers that were, um, incredible people and wanted to do nothing but make sure my road, uh, was as smooth as possible. And so kind of tapping on to Melissa's point about the system, the system is made up of people. And the people who are teaching our kids and our leaders, we are as good as our people. So if we all do our job and be the leaders that we know we can be, then I think we're ahead of the game. And I see all these faces in front of me that want to do just that. So I, I think in that respect, in that was my reflection, um, is just again gratitude and a thankfulness for folks willing to step up to the plate and be the leaders that our constituents have trusted us to be.
Great. Thank you, Lori. That, uh, that makes my heart all warm and fuzzy, honestly. Like that, that's, that's like, you know, that's the humanizing part. That's the connection. That's like, that's what happens when we do our work around the internalization of white supremacy, right? Like, it's like, it's huge. It, it, it's, that's where, that's where like personal change, um, transforms systems.
I agree. And I, and I truly believe, you know, uh, there are so many amazing white men in this world that want to do the work and want to be there for people and women, of course, as well. But I just think it's so important that we really recognize that and we make sure that we know, I mean, I'm so appreciative of that. And the gentlemen and the women step up to this work and really want to, you know, help out and, and be there and not just even help, just, just be there. Because sometimes just the presence alone is so powerful. And we need to remember that.
Great. Thank you, Lori. Thank you so much. Anybody else feeling called?
I can go. This is Lieta. Matthew, I appreciate you saying choose a hard one. Because at this time of day, I was like, oh snap, I can do this one. I was like, well, no, I can't. Thank you, Matthew. So thinking about it, what comes to my mind is what I've been struggling with is hierarchy, um, and access to power and ego. So I bet in situations when I see something, which now is like looking at a different lens, what do I say? What do I don't say? If I say something, now I'm aggressive, now I'm intimidating, right? Which is, I'm a Leo, I'm an only child and I have Germanic culture. That's been my MO my whole entire life, right? But it's different this time, right? It's different. And I'm like, huh, okay. And so at the point where like, okay, so now you're talking about my tone instead of my message, right? And so putting a lens of like, I'm just scratching the surface of feeling that myself. Imagine what every other demographic in our community deals with, right? So not even grasping that, but feeling that, right? And going, okay. So if I don't have the energy, because I'm centering myself, because of my responsibilities and my duties in my life, and that was my timer for my dinner for my mother that just went off, but now I'm talking. Right? So then I'm centering myself. So I don't say anything. Now I'm using my white silence. Now I'm the bystander, right? So that's been my struggle of access to power, taking that risk, saying something, but now I'm aggressive. And I have a growing list of yes, white men telling me I am pushy, I'm a bitch, I'm aggressive, I'm intimidating. At the end of the day, I want to say, my question still stands. My question still stands. So that's what I've been struggling with. Is when I say something, but how I say something, how I present myself, how I don't present myself. If I say it, when I say it, I'm struggling with that because it's deflecting. And I'm really tired of being called intimidating and aggressive and a bitch and a witch. Right? And I feel like I'm getting even more now because I'm asking uncomfortable questions. But I can take that risk, but it's taking a toll. And so if I feel this way, just asking a few questions about some policies or things we're doing or not doing. Imagine what everyone else I haven't even met or I have met, what they deal with on a daily basis, overwhelming.
Yep. Yes. Yes, 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 yes. All the things.
So thank you, Matthew, for making me do the difficult one.
I appreciate you. I appreciate you bringing that into the space because that's just, I think that goes back to, to Angela's point about professionalism, right? Like, like when people show up and they're angry, like they have a right to be angry. That's okay. Like sometimes we just need to sit with that and listen and say, I hear you. And I'm sorry, you know? And so like, I just, I, I just so appreciate you bringing that in there. Is that like, that's, that's our ability to be our full human self. Like, and, and it's okay.
Like, I want to tell people, you should have met my father. Like, I feel like I'm doing pretty well. Like, you should have met my father. Right? But that's awkward. I can't just go, oh. But it's just like, I try so hard, but then I was like, but I'm just feeding the system then by trying to watch how I say and when I say it, right? With a smile. That's another thing. People telling me to smile. Anyway, I'm gonna go get my mother's dinner. I'm gonna be back in a second. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do, I, if I could say one thing, um, hopefully Lieta can hear me. Um,
I can hear you, Eileen.
Okay, okay. Um, but one thing that's coming up for me about that is that this idea, and I think Lori was speaking to this as well, that white supremacy is a disease that impacts all of us. We talked about that a little bit before with Charlie's story as well, right? It's like, it impacts all of us. It impacts us all differently. Like people of color are going to have very direct personal impacts that limit their opportunities, that limit their life choices, that can inflict bodily harm on them, right? So that's a different impact. The way it impacts white people, um, is going to be more subtle and there's a way in which you can continue to benefit from the system, right? Um, the other piece that's coming up for me though, is that as you become accomplices, you start seeing that splash over. So you see, when you, when you become an accomplice and you, um, you align yourself with the goals of anti racism, we just saw this happen, you know, if I can bring up a probably maybe in some circles considered controversial topic of the Kyle Rittenhouse decision. Um, the victims in that case were white people, right? The crime, the, they were white people who were there in defense of communities of color, who were there to protest what they perceived as injustice toward a community of color. And they were the ones who were victims in that situation. So, um, so that, that's one piece that's coming up for me is that, you know, that's how white supremacy works. When you align yourself with anti racism, then, um, you're, you start receiving those impacts. The other thing that's coming up for me though, is that this can't be individual work, right? So as you're talking, Lieta, I'm like feeling myself nodding. I saw people's, other people's heads nodding, like, no, I think there's no woman on earth and no person of color on earth that didn't, that didn't resonate with. Um, and so now we are looking at this screen full of people who heard your story, some of us who have direct empathy with your story. Um, we've all heard it and we are all called to be there with you. Because we all know Alieta, right? We all know, uh, Councilmember Jefferson. We all know somebody who had to bear this burden alone and who felt alone when bearing this burden of doing your hair after PT so that you could go do the job that everyone else is doing, right? Um, who spoke up and questioned the policy and got all this pushback on them. So let's commit to not letting those people be alone. Let's commit to amplifying those voices and being there in solidarity with one another. There's a whole screen full of people here who will do this together. You've all done this 21 day challenge together, right? So let's commit to being there for one another when we see those things happening. That's how we're going to be, that's how we're going to, that's how we're going to be those people that transform this is we transform our Grace Lee Boggs, what you were saying earlier, um, like weird people are the system. Grace Lee Boggs was a civil rights activist, and that's one of the things that she said, you transform yourself to transform the world. Right? So that's the, the change we want to see starts with, within us and then the people, the way we interact with other people. And pretty soon that ripple effect spreads. So thank you for bringing that up, Lieta. I got all fired up.
I know, me too. I was like, too early for a gin and tonic. So we end on time tonight.
Okay.
Anybody else? Joan?
Yeah, I've, um, I've listened more tonight than I actually want to talk because, uh, this is a, this is a big, big trigger point for me. Uh, I mean, it's huge. Um, I started in professional life, so to speak, in the sixties. And before the Civil Rights Act, uh, I've marched for many things. I've been told to sit down and shut up. I've been told that I'm, you know, acting arrogant and, you know, we don't need any more tall people around, kind of an attitude. And so I've been through many of these things in the midst of which I, uh, sounds weird to say aloud. You know, I've been very successful and I, I've been the first woman to, um, break some barriers and stand up for, um, black, brown, Jewish, whatever, people have lost jobs for doing that. And so I, um, but I really, really feel is that white men are a problem. Not, not all of them. Pete's not a problem. Uh, Michael's fine. Um, but, um, overall, and I, I, and it makes me even shaky to think about what has happened in the last couple of days. That groups of white men over these last 50 years can tell me what to do with my body. That is beyond awful, degrading, every possible thing. And I am, I am very angry. I am, um, beyond disappointed and I'm emotional about it. And some of my very good friends through these issues of, of, uh, female power and whiteness and, and black power also have, have been people of color. Because we identified, we identified with each other. And, um, I've gone to school all my life with people of color and, um, I've lived in neighborhoods and some of the people who've cared for me and rescued me and, and kept me on my feet were, were not white men for sure. And, uh, as many or more people of color than, than white women because of the whole jealousy thing. So there's a, there's a lot in this, not just this one question or this one night, but um, all of these things are for me woven together. And how many times I step to say, do the best you can, be, be kind, be, be strong, tell the truth, always tell the truth, your own truth. And, uh, and try to love one another, you know? I mean, and for me, 40 years pastoring churches, I, I've always come up against, and I think it has not against, come up with, you know, you, you, we have to practice what we preach. And, and what we, what we say as a city or in our policies or whatever, are we practicing that? Is that, is that how we're living and presenting ourselves? And the last thing I'll say is I was reading in the newspaper a week ago, and they were talking about, about racism and about history. And, um, they said that really we can change in this work we're doing or where we are in our lives. We can change the words. So they, so we're not offensive or they sound better or they're more inclusive. But unless we change how we act, it, uh, we can have all the seminars that, that we want. So I just wanted to share a bit of that. Some of it's confession and some of it is, boy, I'm moving on, going, I'm going after this stuff. And I'm not going to let, you know, I don't know what makes me just want to get out on the streets again. So thanks for that.
Yeah. I, I think James Baldwin had it right when he says, I don't, I don't trust what you say because I see what you do. Yeah. We can say all the things and it's, it doesn't mean much.
I also think too, like when we, when we have, um, that moment where we go like, um, oh, but Charlie, you're, you're one of the good ones or Michael, you're one of the good ones. I think that's an important, there's like the subtext there, right? Which is that it's not white men per se that we, that we have, that we have a problem with. It's whiteness and it's patriarchy, right? It's sexism, it's patriarchy, it's racism that we have a problem with. Um, and so I just, you know, just to, to, to affirm what Joan, what I, what I think I heard you saying, right? Um, and I know for myself, when I find myself going, well, yeah, but except for Matthew, right? It's like, that's a reminder to myself, like, it's not the people in this room. It is the, the system that we've all been socialized into.
But I'm, I'm still in rooms in Tumwater. I'm still in rooms in Thurston County. I'm, I'm, I'm still places where I, I don't, I don't like all of the white men in the room because I know what they've done. And I know how they've treated women. And I know how they're, they're not, um, always kind and respectful. And so, um, that's why I want to, want to call out my colleagues to say, you know, what I've experienced in a hurtful or a negative way from white men. Um, they're not represented here. Thank God. So that, that was, thanks for clarifying that.
Yep. I think the danger in that, like, not, not for you, but like, for, like, for me, like, hearing something like that is then that I go to that, to that good or bad, like I'm one of the good ones. And that way that I can easily go to like, well, I'm off the hook then. Which isn't true. I'm always on the hook. Like, I am always complicit in upholding white supremacy and patriarchy and doing the things. Like, that's the status quo. So I literally have to do nothing to uphold the status quo, right? So being, it's that, it's that active, that active pushing against, that active swimming against the current. That is, that, that gets, that gets me there. That gets me closer to who I am and my, and my, my, my most, you know, um, whole self. Um, so, you know, we, we can all be good people and we can all be complicit. And so it's, it's, and that's part of the, that's part of the ways that we, especially as white people, um, internalize white supremacy is distancing ourselves from the bad, from the bad ones. Um, which, uh, you know, no matter where we're at on that spectrum, we can still, we can still be complicit. So I just wanted to put that in there too. Cause I think that's what we're all here to do. And it's easy, and it's easy to uphold the status quo. We get rewarded for it. It's super easy. Uh, Debbie, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, share something because I think things become more raw now that, you know, I mean, we've always been doing this, but I think lately a lot of this has even become more raw. Um, I was on my way to go to a Hanukkah celebration and Pete was there also. And as I'm driving to the Hanukkah celebration, I'm listening to Christmas carols. And I'm thinking, how come we don't hear hu- uh, uh, Jewish music, Hanukkah music, all the different things? It's only Christmas music. This is the first day of Hanukkah. Why are they not playing something like that? And, and it just really impacted me. So by the time I got to the event, I really wanted to make sure that I was very present and aware. And, um, and it just, instead of it being an event I went to, I was more embracing what I was participating in. And it just felt different, um, being more present. And I try to do that more often now. And it's those things that you, that just don't come to your awareness until something like that just kind of hits you. So it's like, why wasn't I hearing Hanukkah mu- you know, music for Hanukkah? Because I mean, this is the first day of Hanukkah for goodness sake. So, yeah.
Yeah, I heard something the other day of like, why we say happy holidays is because there's like, I, I forget what the number was. But the number of holidays between like mid-November and like, and, and into, into January, it was like, it was like a hundred. Like it was, it was a lot. And I was like, oh my gosh, I didn't even know that. I mean, I knew that there was a lot, but not that many. But just thinking, I'm like, like, I'm loving what people are bringing up in terms of that intersectionality. Cause that one around dominant culture and religion is often such a hot topic that as soon, it's like a live wire, like as soon as you touch that, um, it's, uh, that's, that gets hot. But yes, you're absolutely right.
I also, this is a great example of how this conversation does not have to be either or, right? It's like, we started by talking about race and you can see how that, that critical self-reflection about race also lends itself to critical self-reflection about all these other aspects of our life that are all really important, right? Um, so I'm just thinking of a quote, um, that, that's, uh, Jeff Duncan Andrade, who's an educational activist and scholar, um, he pairs these two things together where he's, he puts like, I think it's like Socrates. That the unexamined life is not worth living. And the second part of that pairing is the examined life is painful. That's Malcolm X. So, um, it's both, it's that complexity, right? It's that balance. It's like the unexamined life is not worth living. When we were walking around without our, without our lens, um, things could seem pretty pleasant, but we were missing out on all of this richness and complexity. And when you start to notice it, you do start to notice all the pain in the world, right? So you maybe have seen that bumper stickers, like if you're not pissed off, you're not paying attention. So I feel like that's, that's where, that's where, you know, there's part, that's part of the journey, right? It's not that we're going to be angry all the time, but it does, it does, when you start coming into that awareness and you start noticing all those things more, um, you do start to see how, how prevalent the inequity is.
Well, I just want to follow up on Debbie's thing because I, you know, as I was driving, a little bit different perspective, as I was driving to that, to the Hanukkah event, I'm thinking, is it safe to go here? Uh, you know, should I even be going here? Um, they changed the location to a much more controlled access location. I'm not sure if that's why. But given the environment and the way, the way, uh, stupid things are being done out there, it just, it, and then, and then sort of halfway through that thought, I'm going, well, no, that, that shouldn't even come to, why is this even coming to my mind? Why, why should I even be thinking about this? But the reality is, it's in the back of your mind. You're thinking about it, right? And, uh, and, uh, that, that's a sad state of our society, frankly, where you have to even think about that stuff. So, so anyway, I just, um, uh, unfortunate that we're at that stage where we are in our society. So.
Pete, I'll agree with you on that because I felt a lot calmer as soon as a police officer showed up.
Yeah. Yeah.
I wanted to share something that, um, is counsel, that we had something that had come up recently and, um, they dedicated, um, a plaque on the butternut tree on the campus grounds, um, to George Bush. And one of the things that I, one of the things that I hadn't shared with them, but I knew about before, had heard about, was that one of the reasons that they hadn't done something, that they really considered doing something, was because they were afraid with this climate that we're in right now, that someone would do something to the tree. And, you know, to cut it down or do something to it. And so, you know, it's taken time, you know, to work through those feelings and, you know, um, you know, and it was the group of, you know, the, the, from the historical society, and then uh, there's a group of black legislators and people across the state that um, that joined that committee and that were part of that, making that happen. But it's just the whole aha that is like, yikes, you know, that, you know, we wanna do something that we think is great and but yet they were afraid that something might happen to the tree. So um, just wanted to share that.
I just think we can all use more models and um, more examples of showing folks in our communities, including our kids, that it is possible for us to be different and have different points of, of view and to talk to one another and to work it out and to maybe not agree at the end of the day, but to still treat each other as human beings. You know, I just don't think we have enough examples of that, and I worry that people are losing faith in that. Right? So I'd like, that's why I shared that story with you at the beginning. It's like, hey, I had two good experiences in the last week of, of having a hard conversation with people and having it turn out well. Right? Just to, just to remind ourselves and reaffirm that we can do this, right? We have always done this. We can do this. All right. I wonder if we should transition.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's do it.
We should transition. Okay. Let's do it.
Which means the conversation doesn't end. It's just we're focusing in. Do you got it, Eileen?
Oh, hold on. I'm like, doing something weird with the sharing. Hold on. Okay, I think I got it.
Cool. Okay, so this is gonna be, um, this is pulling the strands from our last conversation into this one, um, in order for us to go a little bit deeper. Y'all remember um, our definition of uh, white supremacy as a level of racism. Um, this is what, this is what we've been talking about this whole time, is this right here. Um, so we're gonna continue to kind of peel this back as like the status quo and, and really dig into what some examples of that actually look, sounded and feel like. Um, to go to the next one. Um, we've also had this conversation, right? Like, this, this iceberg model is a model for uh, systems thinking and systems change. And the deepest lever, the, the, the most leveraged part of the iceberg is ourselves, is us as people. Is our mental models, is our mindsets, our values, our beliefs, our ways of being, our ways of thinking, our ways of feeling. Um, because like we said, like, this is all the, the people, institutions are made up of people, systems are made up of people. Um, so that, that is, that is our deepest point of leverage. Um, and it's that difference between, like, if we're thinking ours, of ourselves as trees, um, it's doing our deepest root work as people and how we're shaped and how we show up, um, and how we perpetuate or, or change the system and the status quo. And then the next picture, I believe, is the Grove, which is, this is our collective work. We've also talked about this today, is um, what happens when we are um, holding each other in place? What does collective care look like? What does this look like as, as collective work? Um, especially when we're showing up in our, in our full humanity and recognizing that in each other, um, and calling that in. Um, that is, that's, that's, that's healing work to do that.
I just picture Liatas one tree and Handelos one tree, yeah. You know, that we've got those interconnected roots, right, is what keeps us, what keeps us growing.
Yep, yep. That's one of the things I've been learning a lot about this, this last year, year and a half, is, is collective care and what that looks like because I'm not good at it. Because all I've been taught my entire life, this is part of that patriarchy, that internalization. If I have work to do on myself, I need to go away in a cave and do it all by myself and then come back magically changed and healed. It's like, it doesn't work like that. So I, that's been a hard one for me. That's been part of my learning journey. And it's our way of being, right? It's, it's, it's how we show up. It's what's in our hearts. It's what's, it's like, how, how is this in our whole bodies and our whole self? Um, and not just our way of knowing, not just knowing the words, like we just said, we can know the words, we can read the books, we can say the things that is not gonna get us to where we need to go. It has to be how we walk in the world, twenty-four seven. So what we're gonna do is, um, since we can't do breakouts, which is what we normally do in a situation like this, we're gonna ask each of you um, to take an aspect of white supremacy culture. So um, you can put the link in the, in the chat. Um, we want you to find one of these um, characteristics. And, and, and think of a couple different examples of what this looks like. Um, what do you notice? Um, what does that look, sound and feel like to you? And it might be you as, uh, personally. Uh, it might be something that you've noticed in the world. I think the deeper reflection is, is you as a person and how you maybe internalize that. Um, that's, that's, that's like the deepest part of the work to do. Um, or we can, or we can, you can also say like, this is how I see this happen in the, in the system. Like, as a part of a policy, as a part of an institution, as a part of like, um, different things like that. So we're gonna give you some time to pick one of those characteristics, to think about it and um, talk about a couple different ways of what, of what that looks, sounds and feels like, and then we'll come back and, and do a little sharing.
Matthew, you keep mentioning, pick one of those characteristics. Is, is there a list we should be looking at or is?
Yeah, I put the link in the chat. So.
Oh, I see it. I'm sorry. I was looking back here. I'm sorry. I see it now.
Okay.
And then scroll all the way down to the bottom.
I'm, I'm there. I'm just being concrete.
Concrete is good.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so we'll come back in like, maybe seven minutes? Check in.
Feel free if you wanna turn your camera off while you do this reflection. We can, we'll be back in a few minutes.
How's everybody doing? Do you have a couple yet? If you do, why don't you pop back on the screen? So we know you're good. And if you don't, that's okay. You don't have, it's not about perfectionism. It's like, it's like Bryn, when Brené Brown talks about your shitty first draft, like, it's just about doing it, getting it down. All right, for the sake of time, cuz we have one more activity that we wanna get to before we let, before eight o'clock. Um, we'd love to hear just what people have, like, which one did you choose? Um, and what was, and what's one example of that you, that you were able to identify of that characteristic?
I'll go.
Thanks, Lori.
Um, I'm not sure if I have read it correctly, but I think I have two, but they kind of go together. Um, one is other or thinking and individualism. And this has been something that's been ongoing in my life, but I will, at the end of it, I will, it's positive. Um, because I default positive. It's just who I am. Um, it's filling out forms. From the very first time, I was expected to fill out a form for anything. I guess it'll be the first recollection is in, is school, doing standardized testing, being asked to fill out what your race is. And there was never a category for me, ever. It was white, black, other. So you know what I did? I checked all three. White, black, other. That's me. Um, and I think that also kinda ties into individualism. I was not gonna be defined by one circle on that form. I am who I am. And I'm super proud of being a biracial person in this, in this life. I think it gives me a unique viewpoint of the world, growing up the way I did. And I wouldn't trade it for anything, for all the bumps and bruises that have come along with it. And that for me, because it was my most earliest recollection of um, the system, I guess we could also call it, um, was being forced to put myself, being forced to label myself right out of the gate. So that is my example. When I said I would am positive, and I mean that sincerely because those things are changing. I've been, I've had the privilege of being at those tables to take those changes on those forums and putting those categories for children to say, no, you have many things to choose from. You can pick everything that you are, and that's okay. So I think that's a good thing, and I think that's where we're headed. And I know, again, as I said earlier, that this group of people wants those things to happen. And I think as we all keep working together and we work with love and support and are mindful of folks' feelings and I think we're gonna do really great work for our, not only our school systems, but for our great city of Tumwater.
Awesome. Thank you, Lori. I love that. Michael?
Thanks. Um, the one that, I, I talked a little bit about the perfection thing, so I'll choose a different one. Um, the one that I really jumped out to me is worship of the written word. Like, when you, in, in law school, they beat it into you that this maxism, that justice is blind, right? That when you have a law, that it is equally applicable, that everything will be applied in a neutral fashion, that the law itself is, cannot be problematic. The enforcement of it is what can be problematic. And I think that that sort of mindset is so fundamentally flawed and wrong on just like a multitude of levels. Like, if you think about the construction of all these different laws and systems, the, the example in one of the articles was work requirements for receiving Medicaid. We do that in Washington for food benefits as well, for all sorts of benefits, where you have to work in order to access them. But it's really the, the counties that have low unemployment numbers, like King County and Pierce County and Snohomish County, are the counties that have disproportionately higher numbers of people of color compared to the counties where the work requirements do not apply because they're more rural and more white. And I, I think like a lot of times, we sort of look at the law and it becomes sort of this excuse for applying things inequitably, where we blame it on the person instead of on the system. Where it's like, well, if you would have just complied with the law, or if you had just applied for these couple of jobs and gotten one, then you could continue these food benefits or whatever, without taking into account the fact that these things were created in order to discriminate so that there would be exacerbated poverty, intergenerational poverty amongst population. intergenerational poverty amongst populations to further suppress progression and ascendancy and social progress. So I, I think, I think it's important to keep that in mind so that we don't think that business as usual is fine, because it's not, right? We could always say, well, that's the way it's always been, that's a different one of these. But I, I think white supremacy wants us to think that justice is blind as opposed to having a critical lens about how these things will actually impact people and what the design truly is.
Great. Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Eileen.
I too picked the, the written word, and for me, it goes back to my faith and to what's in, you know, with the Bible and my, my association with people, like finding people. I had a group of friends, and I promise to speak in the past tense, but I've been part of a group of friends for many, many years. And we would get together and read the Bible, do these things together and all. And so with COVID, we weren't able to get together. And then, and then it wasn't until, you know, and we've been, we're very different, you know, but this group of people, you know, they're, you know, we're very different. And so I was told that once that God didn't want me to be a Democrat. So I mean, that was kind of where, where it was. And so anyway, one of the members sent out an email that described how there was a pastor in the White House during the past administration who was teaching that COVID was, was the reason for COVID was because it was his, God's was angry at homosexuals and homosexual marriages. And I couldn't, I couldn't do this anymore. And so I have been silent and and that's not, I should have this hard conversation because I've been in other meetings too, to have this hard conversation. So at least tell them why I'm not going any longer and have, to be honest with them and have that hard conversation because it has been, I mean, this is a friendship that's gone back for like 20 years. And it's just, it is just really difficult. So I wanted to share that.
Thank you, Eileen. I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that reflection and that like call to action, you know, for yourself. Because that sounds hard. Darby.
So I'm going to share my theme for tonight seems to be places where I'm struggling with maybe the material or the concepts. So it's a struggle that I have, and it's similar to the, the written word and just, you know, a lot of these characteristics that, that are presented is maybe it's because our culture is so deep. But even when you're trying to move in places that are designed to help people and to overcome these things, it all falls back to these kinds of characteristics that seem to be required in order to implement those sorts of changes. And the best example I can think of is in, I used to work for the state board for community and technical colleges. In the last session, there were two bills that were all about diversity, equity, inclusion and anti-racism. They were huge, complex, they included a tremendous amount of requirements for training for students, training for faculty. All of the colleges had to put together DEI strategic plans and they had to do campus climate assessments. And they had to do that once a year and they had to do listening tours and they had to have all, you know, the whole group of people involved in all of this stuff. There was money attached to it. There's a big desire to transition more part-time to full-time faculty. So tremendous amount of information in these bills, all designed to support students of color and historically marginalized students. So at the end of the session, you have this and you have the funding. And then it turns to, well, who's going to do all this work? How is this work going to get organized? How is this going to get implemented? And you turn to your diversity, equity and inclusion officers and say, let's go. And it's that, that isn't the experience that folks in those positions have. They, they don't have experience with organizing surveys and implementing surveys and putting strategic plans together. Those are the sort of things that, that live in this list of white supremacy dominant culture characteristics, written word, doing reports, documentation. So somebody has to do all of that work that has to be done. Otherwise you could be in danger of breaking the law if you don't do what the new legislation says, and you could lose the funding for it. So it is a, it is a fascinating evolution that I am struggling to understand how does all of this work? It's, it feels very ironic that this is all designed to help people. But as long as we still have the system, you know, the, the, these characteristics can't just be thrown out unless the entire system is completely thrown out. And I don't know what it looks like beyond that.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I, that we often say about these characteristics is that we don't want to use the characteristics to, to, to do the work of the characteristics. Right? Like, like these are like a continuum, like the worship of the written word doesn't mean it's all going to go away, right? We're still going to email, we're still going to have like written policies, we're still going to have those things. It's just that what, it's the both and, 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 and like what, like if we're thinking about getting data, like there's a great book out there called Street Data that talks about what are these different kinds of data that we can actually use? You know, to, to document these things that, that, that don't have to be surveys, that don't have to be the ways that we've usually done it, which tend to be a little bit more transactional. But like, what are, what are these different ways that we can, that we can move into doing and being these things that necessarily don't reinforce the status quo? But we don't have to go, we don't have to throw, we're not throwing everything out, right? These things are always going to be here because it's like, it's like a continuum, it's like a polarity. But if all we focus on is that, like that's, that's been our problem, if that makes sense.
Darby, you just like, like spoke to so many levels of my experience. But just to reiterate the idea that you can take the most wonderful idea in the world, and if you implement it in a, in a status quo way, you're going to perpetuate the same thing, right? So I've had this conversation in many, many school districts where it's like, well, we have a racial equity policy, right? But, but then it's like we put, we had no input from the community on it. We put no resources behind it. No one has any kind of training on it and there's, no one's given any kind of time or thought into how it's going to be evaluated. And there's no resources to do it, but if you don't do it, you'll be in trouble, right? So I mean, that happens all the time, all the time. And then people are like, well, we tried that. So, um, so it, to think that we have to do it differently, right? And we have to share power and we have to actually ask the people most impacted, like what would actually make sense here? And then we have to be willing to give up some of the, the power, institutional power that we have and say, what if we trusted the people who have the experience to actually drive this, this forward and, and trust them with the, the power to make decisions and trust them, you know, trust that they, that they know what will be most beneficial to them. It's, it is, it's a big flipping of the power dynamic. And it's something that a lot of institutions are unwilling to engage in. So I often say, when I go into spaces like that, it's like a, a school district or, you know, whatever, we'll, we'll say, oh, we want to set up like an advisory committee, right, to talk to us about comprised of community members and students. And Matthew and I will often say, don't do it unless you're actually prepared to act on what people say, right? Says you can, we've all seen advisory committees come and go where you gather people together and get their input. Don't do a thing with it, that actually just creates more harm, right? That just creates this, this self-perpetuating cycle. So anyway, all of that to say, yes, yes to all of that. And it's, it is hard and it's not anything that any one, single one of us can do alone or any one school district can do alone. That's actually like really, a really powerful opportunity that you have here because you have your school district and your city council starting to work together and starting to talk to each other and starting to, to share some of these common goals and values. And I think you're going to start to see some ripple effects here. And to say that it can happen and the whole system won't transform overnight. And, and we'll start with what we, where we can, where we can impact it.
Eileen, I'm looking at the time and I we have time to at least dip our toes into that.
Yeah, let's differ.
All right, let's do some toe dipping.
Let me, let me find the PowerPoint now.
Sorry, it's late. You got it?
I got it.
Cool. Okay, so what we're going to do, now that you've, that you've chosen, can you make that big? Like do the presenting mode?
Yeah.
Cool, cool. Now that you've picked one of the, the, the aspects of white supremacy in the status quo, we want you to kind of think about what the other side of that continuum is going to be. So what we're doing is we're like thinking about what are those ways of thinking and being and doing that by showing up that way, we can, we can do that unraveling of, of, of the status quo. Like we can practice, like what we talked about earlier, like we can practice what that would look, sound and feel like to show up in a way that's going to get us to something, a different possibility, right? It's what, it's what transformation looks like. It's what our own healing actually looks like from white supremacy. So we just kind of wanted to dip our toes into that a little bit. So thinking about which one you chose, think about what the other side of that continuum would look like, what would that look, sound and feel like? And try to think of, of a, of a couple of examples of what that would, would look, sound or feel like. And I'll just say that like, this can be a little bit challenging because it's a little bit easier to identify the status quos because it's what we like, it's the water that we swim in, it's the air that we breathe. But thinking about living in a world that doesn't, that, 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 that isn't the status quo is hard because it's not what our experience has been. But we want to just practice leaning into that space. So we can start to identify what that, what that would feel like, what that would look like. So we'll give you, what, maybe seven minutes to, to think about that? And then come back and we'll just do a, a quick share out of, of a few folks and kind of check in before we leave. And we could leave this up. Right, Eileen?
Yeah.
Okay. It's, we don't really have a link to the whole thing. Okay. One more minute. Okay. Eileen, can you stop the share so we can see everybody? Cool. Thank you. All right. We'd love to hear from a few folks. This is part of a transformational relationship and partnership framework that, that I've helped, like birth six, seven, eight years at the ESD. So it's hard to give a link because the Google Doc link doesn't like ship, all the formatting and stuff doesn't show up. But we'd be happy to share this with you, like via email or something. So but it's just this idea of, of, of what we've all been talking about today. So if you want to share out just what was that experience like? Was there something that you put your finger on that you would love to practice? What was it like trying to name? The other side of that continuum?
Matthew, I'd like to go first.
Sure.
Because it makes me uncomfortable. So I'm going to do it. I'm going to welcome discomfort like a bid comfort cozy. Because they're amazing. That's what I'm going to do. So anytime I want to be centering myself and being quiet, being silent, being a bystander, I'm going to go, I'm going to put my cozy on. I'm going to put my cozy on. That's what I'm going to do.
Love it. I love it. Thank you. Debbie?
So I had the, hey, had urgency in it. And I just feel like urgency has just been kind of my mantra for a while, especially this last year. And it was funny because when that thing came up and I finally found urgency and it, and it just said, hold on, knowing when to go slow. And it was like, well, that's simple. Why didn't I think of that? You know, I mean, it's, it was like, I was struggling with what is the opposite of that? And, and that was just, it kind of like almost let you breathe for a second. And I think that's the part of rushing. And urgency is you have difficulty taking a breath. And so that was, I think, very helpful. And that's something I'll keep in mind.
Great. Thank you so much, Debbie.
I'm with Debbie. I also chose urgency and transformation because I have a sense of urgency today. Because as a black woman, I feel like the system has been so unfair to people of color for so long. Since 1619, when my ancestors came to the US and they were traded as commodities to today where, where angry parents don't want to teach the kids the real history of slavery in America. We need to come to a healing place. So I have a sense of urgency to educate, you know? I have a sense of urgency to just bring so many people in my circle to just to get to know them, to, to try and share and to, to change what's going on in society because it's just so unfair to my people. And just slowing down, I don't know when to slow down. Because there's just so much work to do in society. To just lead and to love people and to share because we're going to transform with love, not hate. And I honestly don't know how to slow down. I don't know.
I would just love to respond or to to say what's resonating with me. And that one comes up a lot because of course we know that that oppression, injustice, racism is happening every day to somebody right now, right? And so I think it's that, it's that idea of how do we, how do we respond to that in a way that's going to be sustaining and long lasting and healing and loving, as you said? And when I think, when I think about the urgency that's harmful, it's like that, the kind of urgency that's like, oh, this happened. So we're going to react with sort of a, a symbolic action that's not going to have long lasting impact. That's not going to get into the kind of change we really need to last. So I appreciate what you're saying. I think it's important for us to, to honor the, the reality that we have to, we can't, we can't not act, right? It's like taking, taking that, knowing when to go slow cannot be an excuse for inaction, right? It cannot be that an, an excuse for us to not do anything. And to, and to think about it more in the way that I think you just so beautifully expressed, which is how do we make that action into something that's meaningful and long lasting and that has impact? How do we show up differently tomorrow than we did today so that we can affect the kind of change that we need? So thank you for bringing that up. I think it's really important to, to really honor what, what you said because racism has been going on far too long.
Thank you. Actually, so it is like, how do we slow down to love? How do we slow down to respond? Like that's, that's the slowing down. That's like knowing when to go slow is like, we need to be here together and we need to have this conversation. And that means slowing down a lot of times. So I think, I think you, I think you were right on it. Thank you. All right. How about one, one more? We're talking about sense of urgency. Mayor Pete?
Oh, um, I had, I had a lot of trouble trying to, trying to figure out what you guys were getting at as I looked at those various categories and things, but I, I guess I, I ended up thinking about this one about right to comfort. And I, I guess I would start by just saying, we all chose to be discom- experienced discomfort by running for office. It's a totally different experience and it really puts you in a place where you're uncomfortable for the most part. And as elected officials, we deal with a lot of uncomfortable stuff. My challenge is going to be, I'm soon to become no longer an elected official and I, I have to be careful that I don't slip back to just becoming comfortable, right? To really continue to think about these issues in my own personal life and, and think about how I can further the conversation, not being an elected official. So anyway, I just, I just that sort of resonated with me.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I wish we could go around and hear what everybody is sitting, is sitting with right now. And I know we can't. So I guess the invitation would be after this, after this, like find somebody to connect with, find somebody to share with, find somebody to have a conversation about leaning in to, to disrupt the status quo and what that looks like for you. And I don't know if y'all just want to say like a word to close it out. Put in the chat. I just really appreciate you all in this conversation and you all leaning in and showing up with your hearts and speaking your truth. I feel that and I see that. And I just, I am really grateful for that.
I agree. I echo what Matthew says. I really so appreciate the, the courage and the vulnerability of this conversation and just really the heartfelt commitment to having a different community. So, so much appreciation to all of you.
Yeah, this is Pete. And again, this is my last session as your mayor. And, and so I just wanted to, first of all, just thank Eileen and Matthew for leading us through these sessions. I know you, your work continues here. You've got, I think, a couple more next year. And, and, but I, I just want to say that I thought, I thought this whole process of the 21 day challenge and looking at the various materials really, really opened my mind to some perspectives I had not really thought about. And so I, I think, I think this is a a very useful exercise and I've really, I've really enjoyed these conversations. I've learned a lot about probably learned more about my fellow, some of my fellow office holders that I didn't know before. So I hope, I hope everybody here can build off of this and you know, really lead our, both of our organizations to the next level. So anyway, thank you all for letting me participate.
May I teach you all some Hawaiian? In Hawaii, when we, you know, I bet you all know how to say thank you, right? Mahalo. Hey, mahalo. And you know, when you don't want to say goodbye, goodbye to somebody, like first of all, you say aloha, right? Which means like farewell, but it also means hello. It's a greeting. It's a farewell. And it, it comes with a conveyance of love and appreciation. And the other thing that we say is ahuiho, which means see you later, see you soon in the future. And one of the last things we always say is malama pono, which means take good care of yourself. So y'all want to try some Hawaiian? You can say malama pono and ahuiho. Mayor Pete? Or mahalo. Aloha. Or aloha. All right, ahuiho, everyone.